Got their phones off, are we there pretty much? Okay, well, welcome everybody here. It is December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, meeting begins at three P. M. We'll ask everybody to please make sure you're signed in in the back and shut your cell phones off. Check your cell phones if you would. We'll start out with a prayer with Deanna Nyberg and a pledge by Tanya Craven. Is she here? She was hobbling her. Okay, alrighty. Amen. Thank you. You can start from back there if you.
My fellow legions, it's unified by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, approval of, pledge of, approval of minutes of the December eleventh, twenty twenty-three work session and December twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Have motions, comments?
I would make a motion that we approve the minutes of December eleventh work session and December twelfth in regular meeting.
We have a motion. I'll second. Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, warrants, Mike?
There we go. Commissioners, I have warrants from December fourteenth in the amount of one million, one hundred ten thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars and seventeen cents. Just a few of the big ones there was the health insurance for the month at three hundred and fifty-two thousand. We had Clark equipment for a mini excavator that was a fig, part of the fig grants for a hundred eighty-four thousand, seven ninety-one. We also made a payment of forty-five thousand dollars on Western Park and a hundred fifty thousand dollar payment on the conference center. And there are no claims.
No claims? Alrighty. Any comments? Okay. No tax matters. All right. Uh, let's see, Lance Dean for Indigent Defense, was that Zeke?
Morning Commissioners, uh, Zeke out purchasing and grants office. We had a RFQ go out for an Indian Defense Council. We had one physician open up. Um, we had three proposals submitted, one from Aaron Owens, Tyler Ayers, and Kit Erickson. We had a four-person review committee review those and score them according to the requirements listed in this, the RFQ. Um, so they reviewed them, scored them, and came out with Tyler Ayers as their recommended awardee of that RFQ. And so we present that to you for your consideration.
Okay, and you're needing a motion and approval on that today?
Yep.
Okay, any questions, comments?
I'd make a motion to approve the contract with Tyler Ayers for Indigent Defense Fund.
I don't.
Amount?
Um, there is a contracted amount, it's a set amount that is, because it's paid for by a grant. So, um, I don't have it here with me, um, but there is a set amount paid for by the grant.
Okay.
So.
Got a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Commissioners, are we able to allow that to be, so the contract for that is a form contract? Does that need to come back through again or are we able to allow that to be signed?
What we've been doing is just signing them.
Just signing those.
Once we've approved it, then it's authorization to sign it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, alrighty. Uh, care center parking lot, Zeke, could you?
Sorry, on that one, um, we're gonna have to close that and rebid it. Uh, we're, what we're doing there is we're applying for a grant for the care center. They don't qualify for the grant, so we, um, it's a federal grant. Um, and that one does have, anytime you have construction work, there's Davis Bacon wage requirements that have to be, that we found out, it has to be posted in our RFP. So we're gonna have to close that out since we didn't have those in there and rebid it, so that's what we'll be doing there.
Okay, alrighty. Thank you. Uh, number seven, resolution number twelve dash nineteen dash twenty twenty-three, R one, twenty twenty-four budget adoption, Mike?
Okay, Commissioners in front of you, you have the resolution and the budget as it stands today or at this moment. Total of seventy-four million, one hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. This budget has been worked on and worked on and worked on. This budget is a million and a half less property tax increase than what was presented in the original budget increase, or budget, uh, public hearing. So whatever you do with the next resolution will have an effect in this, it'll go to fund balance, whatever is decided upon. So with that, Commissioners, I present resolution twelve nineteen, twenty twenty-three, R one, to adopt the twenty twenty-four budget as it stands right now, subject to final decision later.
Okay, comments, motions?
I would make a motion that we adopt a smaller budget to the tune of the, next to last page, Mike.
Oh, there we're hearing this.
Which?
What is the proposed amount?
What was it on that one, Mike?
Seventy-four million, one twenty-five, three hundred. Have you got something different than what I have?
No, I'm, I'm proposing that we go to the next to the last page on.
That's only the municipal service fund.
Oh, he's.
Oh.
No, I'm sorry, on the paperwork you gave me.
That's the tax increase, not the, that's, we need to do the budget first.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to accept the budget as presented.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No? All right, let's move on to, uh, resolution number twelve nineteen, twenty twenty-three, R two, tax increase.
You've got it in front of you.
Oh. Did you want to say anything to it or just?
The, what it stands right now with the budget that was there, subject to change, is resolution twelve nineteen, twenty-three, R two, three point five million dollar increase for the general fund, four hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred for the library, our insurance, one hundred twenty thousand dollars, and the health department, forty-two thousand, for a total increase of four million, one fifty-three, five, which is a reduction of one point five million from the original public hearing. And for a total tax revenue for U N A County, eleven million, eight hundred eighty-six thousand, five hundred. That is how the resolution stands and was presented, but subject to your discussion and motions. I have provided several different scenarios, so trying to be able to answer questions.
Sonia never got a copy and I just.
I have a copy, I, I just didn't pick it up.
I just got handed this five minutes ago, John, right.
I did get a copy, I just supposed, apparently left it on my desk, I did look at it though, thank you.
As I stated, we're only a minute ago, but we're on the right section now. I'm looking at the, uh, one twenty-eight, seventy-seven increase per value of two hundred ninety-two. Next to last page.
Next to last page.
So you're looking at two million, one hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred? Is that what, I don't know what order you've got yours in.
One you gave him to me.
Well, that was the order I had him in.
Okay.
From doing the three point five for a total of four point one, reducing it by a million down to three point one, reducing it down to another million, down to two point one million, and then reducing it down to just the library, insurance, and health at six hundred and fifty-three thousand.
Yeah, I think I'm looking at the two point one with your general operations, library, flood control, tort liability, and health for a total of seven thirty-three, seven million, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars.
Any comments, motions? Is that right? Am I reading mine right? I think I am. With a tax rate of point zero zero two two nine two.
So you, the one I'm, total increase is two million, one hundred fifty-three, five, is that the one you're looking at?
Oh. Thanks. Oh, thank you.
Those are last minute.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong page, Mike, you're correct. Two million, one hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred, that's correct. I really am on the second to last page.
That was how I originally gave it to you.
That would be a twenty-seven point nine three percent increase.
Correct, or sixty-six dollars.
Of two ninety-two, two hundred ninety-two thousand, it'll be sixty-six eighty-four. That would be my recommendation.
Did you want to say anything?
No.
Okay.
Questions?
I, I actually prepared something to say, just to make sure I would say everything I'd like to say and hopefully not get emotional. I think it's on, is that better?
Not much.
I don't know how close I can get without having it in my mouth. Is that better? I don't know if it's turned down or what's wrong with it. Um, I have genuinely valued the insightful conversations I've had with members of our community as they have improved my understanding and broadened my perspectives. Through meticulous scrutiny of the budget, exploring numerous angles, and repeated analysis, I've come to a profound realization. The essential needs of our community have experienced a substantial surge, not just in costs, but also in wages. Particularly noteworthy is the significant increase in law enforcement wages, where salaries have risen by ten dollars per hour. Faced with this reality, I am inclined to believe that absorbing such costs within a single year would be a formidable challenge. In response, we have diligently devised a multi-year plan aimed at gradually elevating these wages to a level that ensures competitiveness. This strategic approach is vital for both filling the vacant positions and retaining the valuable members of our law enforcement team. Over the past couple of years, the state has implemented substantial wage hikes for law enforcement, setting their starting wage at an impressive thirty-three dollars per hour, with our current rate at twenty-two. To put this into perspective, a ten-year veteran could potentially start employment with them at an hourly rate of forty-six dollars an hour. Recognizing this disparity underscores the urgency of addressing our compensation structure to attract and retain top talent within our community. We were entrusted with the responsibility to make decisions that serve the best interests of our county. While we are committed to exploring strategic ways to optimize our resources, we must also exercise prudent financial management. The reality is that the amount in our savings, while valuable, has limitations when it comes to covering the ongoing operational needs of the county beyond a few years. Therefore, as stewards of our community's well-being, is it imperative that we carefully consider the balance between short-term relief and the long-term sustainable, sustainability of our county's operations? This approach will ensure that we not only address immediate concerns, but also safeguard the financial health and stability of our county for the years, excuse me, for years to come. Now turning our attention to this year's proposed county budget. Our decisions have been informed by a comprehensive approach. We've engaged in numerous conversations with our community members, sought insights from other counties officials, tapped into private industry perspectives, and conducted a thorough salary survey for our county employees' positions. This extensive outreach and research have been integral to our decision-making process, ensuring that we are well-informed and considerate of all relevant factors. Over the preceding years, we were able to bolster our budgets with the assistance of federal COVID funds, which proved invaluable in navigating economic challenges. Unfortunately, the conclusion of this financial support has left us facing a deficit. After a thorough examination of various funds across our county, I have identified potential sources from which we can draw funds to address this year's budgetary needs. Conversations with our county clerk auditor and treasurer, however, have highlighted a critical concern. Continual reliance on these accounts would deplete our savings. Operating the county solely on savings is not a sustainable approach. Yet recognizing the complexities involved, I am cautious about implementing a tax increase at this time. There remains much more to evaluate and consider before such a decision can be responsibly made. So, I am making a motion to not increase the taxes this year and with the understanding that there are challenges and we will be looking a lot of different things over the next year. And it doesn't mean we, I don't know how we're gonna come out. It's all waiting to be seen.
We, we had a motion from John, so his was first.
I'm sorry.
Do, uh, didn't you make the motion when we started?
I did.
Okay.
Do you have any comments or want to withdraw your motion or should we call it for a vote on your motion?
For vote.
Okay, let's call for a vote on, uh, John made motion for the, uh, you don't repeat that.
Two point, twenty-seven point nine three percent increase.
I was gonna say I.
Yes, I say, that's what I'm saying, we're calling for, he's restating his motion, I need a second.
I will second, so I can go to a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
No?
Nay.
Okay, uh, that, uh, was voted down, so now do we have any other motions?
I would still propose my motion.
You want to go ahead and repeat your motion?
That there be no in-tax increase this year.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Aye. All right, motion passed. I want it. All right, move, moving on. Uh, N and E Properties LLC, is that you, Matt?
Thank you guys.
Kind of mixed up with everything I've got here. Which one did you sign, John? You just have to check, nay on you and sign it. Got too many things, we better make sure I'm not, I'm not over too much stuff. All right, Matt?
All right, Matt Kazeer with Community Development. Uh, this is a, an application by N and E Properties, requesting approval of the Stonebrooke subdivision phase one amendment. It's adjusting the boundaries of, uh, six, a lot six through eleven within that subdivision. Just to kind of get where we're at here, uh, this is five hundred west and four thousand south here. These lots have frontage on thirty-nine fifty south. And it's these six lots right here. What they're going to do is they're gonna absorb this little piece, this little strip here is owned currently by N and E Properties. Part of, when they originally started the subdivision, they were gonna use this as their, um, as being able to stub to, uh, the property further to the west of their property that they were developing. When they got to phase two, they decided they were just gonna stub that main road, the thirty-nine fifty to that piece, so, um, this piece would no longer, was no longer needed. And so they're, they're wanting to adjust these six properties, um, that thirty-three feet, um, and give that thirty-three feet to those six property owners. And then you have a little piece right out here that would be the right-of-way for where five hundred west and four thousand south meet. Uh, this little piece here would be dedicated to the public for, uh, the roads there. Uh, this is kind of what the plat looks like. So those lots will match up with the other lots in phase two as far as the length goes, and then this little square piece here will be given to the public for, uh, road right-of-way. They already dedicated the road right-of-way here along five hundred south with the original, uh, phase one. So, um, this is the only little piece that's part of that, that property now. And I do have the plat here for signature, it does have all the, has a signature of these six owners and of N and E Properties, so they're all in agreeance on this. And then it has the other signatures from the health department, the treasurer's office, and, um, we're just fire marshal, and so we're just needing the, uh, county commission's signature on this and approval.
Okay, any questions, comments?
No, I've went over this with Matt and reviewed it and asked any questions I had that answered those. I just wanted to make sure that there was the availability for that thirty-nine fifty south to continue on west, if there was development on that property.
So you can see here, they, they have recorded phase two, and the, the road goes all the way to their westmost boundary, so it does stub to this other piece to the west.
Right. And I did not have any other concerns with that, so I would make a motion that we approve, the Stonebrooke subdivision phase one amendment, um, adjusting the boundaries of lot six through eleven and dedicate some land to the public for five hundred west. And there's a bunch of serial numbers, I probably won't read them all. Do I need to read them all?
I think, I think she's got them there on the agenda, so.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, uh, Matt Kazeer?
Yeah, next one's me as well. Okay, so on this one, this is Kelly Dwayne and Jan Powell. They're requesting to deed land to U N A County along Red Wash Road in the area of eighty-two, twenty-five, south Red Wash Road in Jensen. Uh, and this is property serial number, uh, six, one sixteen, and forty-six. I got a call from a title company and they asked if, uh, the county would be interested in this piece of property. Since it is the, it's mainly the county, it's right along the county road, and the current owners used to own property in this area, but they no longer do. And so, um, they're wondering if the county just wanted it for the road right-of-way, uh, essentially. And so, um, this is zoomed in, this is south of Jensen on the Red Wash, uh, highway, uh, next to the Green River here. And it says little triangle piece. You can see that the Red Wash Road goes, uh, through this property. They are, there is a plan with the special service district number one to do some improvements along Red Wash Road, and they're going to have to get the right-aways and stuff like that if they're gonna do any expansion, so, um, I think this would go to help that project. And you have a willing, uh, property owner at this point, um, that's willing to, uh, donate it to the county. There was some questions yesterday about, uh, where the B L M land was around this property, so, um, the yellow property here represents B L M, the white color represents private. Uh, so both the south and the east side of this property are bordered by B L M, and the west side is bordered by private. And then, um, yesterday at the meeting, uh, John Sturmer asked that I go down and walk the property, it's not a very big piece. So I did, I went down and walked the property, uh, there's nothing on the property that looks dangerous, there's no glowing barrels or spilled oil or anything like that. It looks like a, I mean, it's mainly the road, and then you do have some, uh, property off the edge of the road, uh, here, but it, uh, there's nothing there that's atypical of, uh, a lot of open ground with some residences dispersed in that area. So I, I don't see any reason, uh, that would complicate this, uh, transfer of property. I did get a, an email from Wendy Long, the treasurer. Uh, she did check the taxes and it looks like the, the taxes are current. And it said that the twenty, the twenty twenty-three taxes had been paid as well. And then she said on average, the taxes have been about twenty to thirty dollars a year for this piece of property, so, um, it's not gonna take a big, uh, chunk out of the tax rolls of the county, if this goes into the, to county ownership, and I imagine that eventually it would go into a right-of-way or something like that, um, as they do improvements to this road, so.
All right, any questions, comments?
No, I also visited with Matt on this one and, um, again, asked a few questions and we discussed what he's explained here. I don't see any reason why this wouldn't be beneficial for the county to own, it's pretty much the road. It doesn't interfere, I don't think, with any of the property and their, what they're doing there. So I would make a motion that we approve the, or we accept the land, is that what it be, or accept the deed to this land, uh, for U N A County along Red Wash, Red Wash Road at eighty-two, twenty-five, south Red Wash Road in Jensen, it's serial number zero six, one one six, zero zero four six.
Here we have a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
All right, thank you.
Right, uh, Jamin, do you have the next one for John or is that? Okay. Quick question, did John come through his operation all right? Do you know, have you heard anything? Okay. Sorry to get off track.
So Commissioners, I'm here, last year we had, we made a contract, a year-long contract with SML Strategic LLC, which is Charmaine Goal. She did an awesome job for us last year, helped us set up lots of things within my office. She secured for our office four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the pre-trial services program, which is up and running. Um, we're also having anticipated, an anticipated, anticipated increase up to six hundred thousand for this fiscal year of twenty twenty, coming fiscal year of twenty twenty-four, and she's also helped us with the drug court program. I'm asking the commission to approve another year contract with her, um, for a total contract. I'm asking the Commission to approve another year contract with her, um, for a total contract price of a hundred and fourteen thousand. That's nine thousand five hundred per month. And I have a copy of the contract here, it's basically in the same form as last year, just with a difference in the contract.
And am I correct that this is covered by this, this funding?
This come, this comes from my, my budget.
It comes from that funding for this pre-trial, that grant or?
For the contract?
Mm-hmm.
No, that comes from my budget, from the county attorney's office.
Oh, I was understanding though that it came, passed through from that grant to pay for that.
It's always come through a consulting services line that's in my budget for this year and hopefully next year. If you have any questions, I mean Charmaine's here, I'm not going to put her on the spot, but I'll tell you Charmaine has done a lot for our county. Um, I mean, we're up to six hundred thousand dollars this year, the pre-trial program's great, Drug Court is up to twenty-five participants full-time right now. Um, she's done a lot for anyone that's asked, outside of the bounds of her contract.
So does this encompass Drug Court in, I mean, is it kind of, they work together, or how does that work?
This is an agreement with the county, Charmaine works for me in my office, and specifically it's for the services and the leg, she goes up to legislature, secures this funding with different legislators every year, but this is also, I mean, she does a lot of things for us. She's, I call her my fixer, um, that's what her name tag says above her office, but she does a lot of things for our office.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just meant, I thought you mentioned Drug Court in what you were saying just a minute ago.
She's helped with, yeah, she helped secure the, um, agreement for, uh, Drug Court software. So, yeah, if there's anything in my office, she's probably touched it.
I, I second what Jamin said, we need to keep her.
I might add also, this pre-trial services, we are the only ones in the state that are actually doing it right now. That was a pilot project that she was able to obtain for us, out of all the other twenty-nine counties.
Yeah, and she's hel, and she's been, she's talked, Northeastern is working on a, uh, gosh, the name just, what, what am I thinking?
Crisis.
Crisis Receiving Center, um, and she's been part of that as well, so. If you have any questions, she, she can answer them, she speaks better than me.
Well, I, you know, I agree with what you're saying, and she is seen on the hill up there and is well-known, and is, I think we're well-represented.
I concur.
I think she's done great things for the county, and I like the direction we're headed.
Sure.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Prior to this, um, I'd like to highlight that in twenty-twenty-one, uh, the County Commission, um, got together, uh, a Criminal Justice Corps named council, which sits, which sits all county commissioners, elected judges, elected officials, um, chiefs of police, to really look at their criminal justice system to see the, the revolving door, um, because that is a high cost to the county. With that, we meet, uh, consistently, uh, quarterly through that analysis, we realized we were at a fifty-one percent recidivism rate. So, um, with the target goals of to enhance Drug Court, um, to revitalize that, as well as, uh, the jail mat opioid treatment program to reduce overdose upon jail release, um, to add a pre-trial supervision, a county probation, and in hopeful twenty-twenty-four, um, a crisis care receiving center. So they take this very serious on their community members that are struggling in the criminal justice system, primarily with mental health and substance use. So, I'd like to you guys to understand that, um, there's a lot of state partnerships, not just grant and pilots, but other counties are going to be learning from the things that we improvise, because they don't want to keep building, building more prisons to encompass this population. They want to be able to reform and rehabilitate, so. It's been a pleasure working with the county, and I look forward to the upcoming projects.
Okay. You want to go ahead with your motion? I'll continue my motion now. To approve letter of agreement between Uena County, Utah, and SML Strategic, uh, LLC, effective January one of twenty-four, ending December thirty-first, twenty-four, for the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. You have a motion?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Thank you Commissioners.
Okay, let's see, we are now have the need for a public hearing. Jamin, you might help me walk through this, make sure I do this correct, or Mike can probably do, uh, where I need to, uh, do we have to have a motion to go into a public hearing at this time, or do, we are opened into a public hearing?
Let me present it, and then you'll open it for public comment in the public hearing, and then close it and go from there. Commissioners, it's the end of the year, last meeting of the year, I've reviewed all the budgets throughout the county, and at this time I present to you Resolution twelve nineteen twenty-three R three. These are the budgets that after review feel like they need to be adjusted before the end of the year. Gen, Fund Ten, General Fund, Justice Court, fifty thousand, Clerk Auditor, thirty-five thousand, Recorder, forty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty-five. Building and grounds, two hundred ten thousand five hundred and twenty-five, public health, fifty thousand, mental health, ten thousand. Revenue sources, City Election Services, ten thousand, Naples City Justice Court revenue of forty thousand, fund balance of three hundred and fifty-five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Fund Eleven, Municipal Service Funds, termination benefits, twelve thousand, federal pilt of twelve thousand for revenue. Fund Fifty-Five, Western Park, County Fair, ten thousand dollars, capital projects in Western Park, twenty-five thousand, coming from fund balance, Western Park of thirty-five thousand, and that's all of them. And hopefully I didn't miss anybody in through all of my review on that.
Questions or comments?
I'd make a motion that we go into public comment.
Okay, we are in public comment now, then we?
It's a public hearing.
A public hearing, I'm sorry. Not now, okay, we are in a public hearing at this time, okay, go ahead and, uh, any comments?
Any of the public?
Public want to comment? Okay, this time we need to go out of public com, public comment, will motion go out of public hearing? And so moved, and now we're back in general, uh, County Public Commission meeting, and now I need to have a motion to, uh, or a discussion or debate, or, whatever we want to do on this.
I think we ought to have a motion to approve Resolution twelve nineteen twenty-three R three.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, we are going to go into public comments, you, is that good mic recovered? Okay, public comment is a time for public comment, not public debate, the county will listen to the comments made and take them into consideration. The county will not be responding to comments or answering questions. Comments made might not be something the county has the power of, power to act on. This is a recorded public meeting, if someone would like to make a comment, they will need to wait until the microphone is available and state their name for the records. Please be respectful, no interrupting, please wait your turn. We are going to do it for a total of fifteen minutes, will be allotted for public comments, each speaker will have three minutes to make their comments. Do we have any public comments? Whoever wants to come up first.
Kason Goodrich, I just want to thank the Commissioners for taking a thoughtful approach to the, the tax issues. Um, I know that there are a lot of comments in the public hearing, and, and that you've dealt with a lot of comments from the public. And I want to thank you for listening to us, uh, and, and I know that the problem isn't resolved, but thank you for taking that time.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name is Shad Shelley. I would like to talk about the letter I wrote and the message I was trying to get across. First, I never said that anyone that works for the county doesn't deserve a raise, I'm sure there's plenty that do. I never put dollar amounts or names of officers or agencies that pay more. I don't believe any of these people have to justify their pay or their worth. My main question was, if there are proposed raises, why are we leaving the sheriff out? It's not because he makes too much or hasn't earned it. Commissioner Larson, I never said you didn't do a good job at the sheriff's office, I supported you while you were there. Commissioner Norton, I never said your hu, husband wasn't a good sheriff, I supported him also. I never said that we haven't had good sheriffs, because we have, but we have a great sheriff right now. He has done things I never dreamed possible. He has doubled the amount of search, search and rescue equipment just in the last year. He has utilized grants and state funding to get us equipment that benefits not only our team, but the entire community. There was a time that Sheriff Labrum was in the hospital with his mother, but he still answered my call. Once he was so sick, he couldn't get out of bed, but he still took the call. The list goes on and on, but no matter what, Sheriff Labrum has always answered that call to see how he could help. Sheriff Labrum never complains. Sheriff Labrum should never have to fight to get the money he needs to staff his department or equip his officers. He deserves our support, and he deserves a raise. As far as our clerk auditor, I never said which of the four options I believed was happening. The fact of the matter is, the community has a lot of questions, it is your duty to find those answers. Your obligations are to protect the community and the county, not each other. I never wanted any part of this fight, let alone be the one to start it. I have been perfectly content doing what I do, and no, no one ever knowing my name. I've volunteered in this community nearly half my life. I've spent more time to help this community in the last ten years than I have spent with my family. I do it because I love this community, and that's why I started this fight. You have violated the trust of the community, the only way to rebuild trust is to give them a voice. Do what you're delect, elected to do. Do your duty and serve this community, if you love that, you will do that, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. Any other comments?
Hi, my name is Bodhi Stubbs, good to see you guys again, much better terms this time, I think, a little bit more receptive crowd. Uh, thank you, uh, for, once again, as they stated, taking the time to review the tax budgets and so on and so forth with everything, I, I'm glad that the public was heard. Uh, that, that, uh, says a lot for you guys, when you guys actually do listen, because that was, the overall goal is for you guys to serve our wants, our needs, and thank you for listening. I do want to add that I hope that the fight doesn't stop here for you guys with the improvements that are being, needing to be made, sorry. Um, amongst those, as I discussed earlier in our last meeting, was some efficiencies. I do not think that the tax is going to be where this stops, I do hope that you guys can dig into that, find other revenue sources, you said you were able to, um, become more efficient in what we are doing, and serving us in the best way that you guys possibly can. So, thank you again, uh, I hope you guys do keep fighting and listening to us as a community, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, big John. I think we're ready for.
Are we ready?
The motion adjourned.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.